Order of Thursday, October 7th. Please silence your cell phones. If you'd like to speak on any particular item, complete a blue slip and get it to Ms. Jessica or someone at staff. Mr. Hayes will lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Could you bow your heads with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity, as always, to come together. We ask, Lord, that we listen to you as you speak through us on the decisions that we're making tonight. We ask that you bless this meeting, and it pleases you in so many ways, we pray. In Jesus' holy name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Ms. Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Andropon?
Here.
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 Vice President Bristow?
Here.
Burley?
Here.
Gillery?
Yep.
Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Bruce?
Here.
Marquinhos?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
We will move past items four and five and come back to those at 6:00 PM. Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Andropon. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September 2nd, 2021. I have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of adopting resolutions for each of the following items as requested by the Division of Engineering.
So moved on all bullets.
A, approving a professional engineering contract between the police jury and C.H. Finstamaker and Associates, LLC, for the MPO supplemental overlay program in wards one, three, and four. B, authorizing the expropriation of property for the Amaco Road Bridge Replacement Project in Ward Two. C, approving the submission of a grant application to the Louisiana Water Sector Program for the gravity sewer trunk mains and pumping stations for South Ward Three and South Ward Four Project. D, authorizing the parish engineer to advertise for bids for a Peton Street at Gil Street Parking Lot Expansion Project. E, accepting overlaying of various roads in Ward Four of Calcasieu Parish as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Barris on all bullets and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Mr. Barris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bruce, can you remind these crews to go get their orange signs out the ditches? Thank you, sir.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Barris. Number nine, consideration of approving the following items as requested by the Office of the Administrator.
Move on now and all bullets.
A, adopting a resolution approving the Calcasieu Parish Road and Drainage Trust Fund Program. B, adopting an ordinance to consolidate voting precinct number 313E with precinct number 313W and to consolidate precinct number 316W with precinct 316E. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Barti and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Ten, consideration of adopting, of approving the following items as requested by the Division of Planning and Development.
Move on key.
A, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends ten renewal applications be approved. B, adopting resolutions extending the following executive orders through February 27, 2022. I, Executive Order 2020-09A waiving zoning restrictions and fees for temporary dwelling units. And II, Executive Order 2020-15 waiving the free board elevation requirement for structures damaged or destroyed by Hurricane Laura or Delta. C, approving the recommendations with reference to the adjudicated property sale conducted on September 28, 2021, and adopting an ordinance with respect to each parcel. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Barris. Apologies. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Eleven, consideration of adopting resolutions for each of the following items as requested by the Human Services Department. A, approving the submission of a funding application to the Federal Transit Administration for the provision of transportation services to rural citizens. B, approving the submission of a funding application for the 2022 Job Access and Reverse Commute Program. C, approve a cost reimbursement agreement for participation in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. D, approve a memorandum of understanding for the administration of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. E, ratifying the submission of a grant application for the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. F, approve a grant application as part of the 2021 Continuum of Care Program competition. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Hayes and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on twelve, all bullets.
Item twelve, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the following items as submitted by the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. A, submission of a grant application for the State Homeland Security Program Grant. And B, submission of a grant application for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. I have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Andropon and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting Mallard Junction Park Hurricane Repairs Project as substantially complete. I have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Barti. Any discussion? Mr. Guillory.
Yes, I just want to thank the Parks Department for getting everything together, opening that park pickup and actually get a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to say something.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, yeah. I also want to thank the Parks Department for getting everything together and opening it up. I know they got a lot of things planned this weekend. Next week, we plan on doing a move under the stars, so it definitely will be ready. And the community really thanks the parish for getting it open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Motion carries. Item fourteen, take appropriate action on terms of the following members.
Move on all bullets.
Second.
A, Community Center and Playground District Number One of Ward Six, appoint Mr. Johnny Groves.
I don't think we can move on all bullets on that.
I'm sorry.
Boy, Josh Neal.
We can't move on all bullets on that item, sir.
No.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gab, one at a time.
On move on all bullets.
I have a motion to appoint Mr. Josh Neal by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Marquinhos. Item B, Calcasieu Planning, Parish Planning and Zoning Board.
Move to reappoint Ms. Cobb and Mr. Little.
Second.
Motion to reappoint Ms. Latricia Cobb and a motion to reappoint Mr. Art Little by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. C, Ward Four Fire Protection District Number Three.
The court was already dated, Mr. Wayne Fleming.
I have a motion to defer for 30 days, Mr. Wayne Fleming, and a motion to reappoint Mr. Curtis Alexander by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Barris. Mr. Andropon, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item E, Vinton Harbor and Terminal District.
Ms. D.
I have a motion to, I have a motion to approve, to appoint Ms. D.
You gotta go back. I got a motion to go by the alphabet.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Item D, Ward Eight Fire Protection District Number Two.
Move to reappoint Mr. Manuel, Mr. Begno, and Mr. Dennis.
I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Charles Manuel, reappoint Mr. Keith Begno, and reappoint Mr. John Dennison.
Mr. Stelly.
A motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Tramani. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Now, item E, Vinton Harbor and Terminal District.
So moved.
I have a motion to appoint Mr. Charles Broussard, submit Mr. Charles Broussard by Mr. Barris.
And Mr. Brent Clement.
And Mr. Brent Clement.
And Mr. Smith.
And a second by Mr. Brain. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. We will take a recess until 6:00 PM where we'll move to items four and five. We will now resume the regular meeting of Thursday, October 7th. Item four, hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM and serve as the Board of Review.
So moved.
To hear protests on current tax assessments. Mr. Gab.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you will recall from last year, about this time every year, this body sits as a Board of Review for the tax assessments. Appeals from Ms. Aguilar's assessments are, come to you first before either party could take it to the Tax Commission. By law, Wendy Aguilar is the assessor and your advisor on these matters, and that's in accordance with state law. So Ms. Aguilar will present the appeals to you, and at that point, after each appeal, you can either uphold or we can have more discussion and figure out what to do next if that's not the course you go.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Gab said, you guys serve as the Board of Review. This is usually done in October, so we're back on a normal timeline. However, we just did this in December of last year after the hurricanes, but this is the normal timeline for our Board of Review. What I want to remind you of real quickly is that we did, because of the hurricanes last year, we did a reassessment. We did a parish-wide reduction on all structures in the parish, residential and commercial, for 2020. When we locked our tax roll at the first of this year and notices went out, after that was completed, we did roll those values back to the previous values unless they had substantial damage. We set up a tiering system for all properties that had substantial damage so that we could leave reductions on those properties that were still damaged and/or closed from the hurricanes, so those are still in place. What, the other part is, in your packet, I tried to make your packets a little smaller. There is a main packet with all the details in it that Jessica has, but I tried to give you just basically a quick little spreadsheet and some small information, but if you have questions, please feel free to ask me. In that packet, you will see the letter that I sent out to all of the property structures in the parish earlier in the summertime to let them know what we were doing with valuations. It's about the third page in there. Let them know what we were doing with evaluations for the hurricane reductions and that they could still apply for hurricane disaster applications in our office for 2021. And I sent those, about 66,000 of those out. So unless you have questions about that, real quick, we will start with number one on our list, which is Bowie Outfitters. That's the old Toys R Us building. That property owner's representative sent in an appeal form to reduce that property. We have it below sale, the last sales price we have. As far as we're aware, there was no hurricane damage, and they haven't provided any further information for any kind of adjustment, so I will request that you uphold my valuation on that property.
Move to uphold, Ag. Second.
We have a motion to uphold by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Okay, the next property is Interfin. There are actually six, six different assessments here, but I'm going to do them all as one property. This is for business assets. Interfin is a pipeline company. It runs through multiple parishes. There is an outstanding lawsuit, but Interfin continues to appeal their valuation every year in Calcasieu, although our values have been upheld at the Tax Commission because there is still an outstanding lawsuit. I would request that you uphold my valuation.
Move to uphold.
Second.
I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Andropon and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
The next property is Fairview Crossing. This is an apartment complex on Fifth Avenue. They did appeal in 2020. They wanted the value of the property zeroed out for all of the buildings. This is one of the properties that we tiered based on a guideline, a set of guidelines that we applied uniformly throughout the parish. That building has already been reduced by 60%, and I've made that tax rep aware that for any further adjustment, we would need an interior inspection of all the buildings. And so I'm waiting on that, so I would request that you uphold my valuation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
The next property is Iberia Bank. This is for, Mr. Parker, who is the tax rep, presented two different Iberia Bank properties. One of them was the one in Sulphur, I believe, that was damaged very badly. We have reduced that one. This one is for the property that is on Nelson Road. He did present an appraisal. The appraisal, which I gave you a copy of, is specifically mentioned on the appraisal. The intended use is for underwriting banking, so basically it's a financial appraisal. It's not an arms-length transaction appraisal for a buyer and a seller. Therefore, I request that you uphold my valuation.
Ms. Kathy, would you please let the record reflect? I recuse myself from this item. Thank you. I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Richard. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next property is the Outback Steakhouse. And, oh wait, did I miss one? No, okay. It's the Outback Steakhouse, and I will give you a little bit of background here, not only for Outback, but also the Wendy's. I believe that these tax reps are appealing because they see the reduction that happened for the 2020 hurricanes across the board repealed, and these properties were not, did not have significant damage and have been able to reopen and so forth. So when I removed that 2020 parish-wide reduction for the properties that were not significantly damaged, these tax reps see that as an increase, although the value was actually going back to what it was prior. So on the Outback, that's, that's basically what I'm looking at here, so I would ask you to uphold my valuation.
On move.
I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
The next is the Pilot Travel Center in Highway. This is a business asset, personal property, machinery and equipment type of property. For those properties, the, that any of you that have a business know, you get the green and white Form, and you submit those to me every year because we are a self-reporting state. As of right now, the business assets for the Pilot Travel Center are exactly what they turned in, so without further information from them, I don't know what they're protesting, why they're protesting, because it's the assets that they've turned in. So I would.
Moved to uphold.
Request you uphold my valuation.
I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Tramani. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Okay, the last one are the Wendy's. I'm going to take it a little bit out of order. The very last Wendy's that you see is the Wendy's that is in Moss Bluff on Highway 171, and it was demolished. So we have taken that, that Wendy's off the tax roll. It's been rebuilt. It will be picked up as a new building for 2022, but for 2021, it is off the tax roll this year. The other four Wendy's, as I stated about the Outback, I think these tax reps are seeing the increase that happened when I rolled off that automatic adjustment for hurricane damages as an increase when it's technically not. I would request that you uphold my valuation.
Move to uphold.
I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Richard and a second by Mr. Andropon. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
I believe that's it for me, guys. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
We have one more item, sir.
We have another item. Thank you, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you.
Item five, hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM, ordering said owner to show cause as to why the structure on said property should not be condemned. 3951 Haymark Road, Southwest Lake Charles area, Ward Three. Mr. Crane.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, this, this is one house located on this address. The owner is Don Hammack Huffpower. He's listed in the tax roll as 3951 Haymark Road. The staff is recommending that this structure be condemned and removed in 30 days.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to condemn by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Andropon. Is there, is the homeowner present?
Yes.
Would you like to speak on behalf of this item, sir?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Don Huffpower, 3951 Haymark Road. The location is, I had to, I'm in court suing the insurance because they didn't give me, they deducted some money owed on the property instead of giving me money to do any work on it, and so I had to sue them to get some money to do the work, and that's what I'm waiting on right now. I do have a neighbor that's a doctor that wants to purchase the property, so either way, it's going to be brought to where it was prior to the storm. It's just I haven't had the money because of the insurance, and that's what I'm doing right now, but I promise you, it will be handled here shortly, you know. I can, I can sell the property, although I never wanted to sell it, but either way, you know, I'm either going to sell it, I would like to get the money from the attorney now. I got Mr. Matt Myes representing me, and I've got paperwork from his office, but you need to look at it right here, and also got a buy-sell agreement, so whatever, which one happens first, you know, that's what I'm, you know, to get it, get it fixed up. That's what my intention is on.
Okay. Mr. Brain.
Okay, Don, so you have a, you're in litigation right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can, is it appropriate to have Sam look at, just briefly look at it and see if it's, you know, if it's okay?
Yeah, the, yeah. Well, we have to, so probably the case, I got to do that.
Mr. Brain, it looks like we, Mr. Huffpower has a, has signed an agreement for representation, did that on September 29 of this year, and it's a four-page document. I, I'm, doesn't really say what it's for, but I'm assuming that it's for, it's a, continues to be agreement that looks like it's related to the damages from Hurricane Laura and Delta. That's all that, it's all that's in there. So, doesn't look like there's a suit been filed yet, but it looks like that's where it's headed.
Okay, is that for, to sue the insurance company? Is that what you're trying to do, Mr. Don?
Yes, sir. That's, Matt Myes is my attorney, and he's, that's what we're doing, that's what we have to do. I didn't want to, but they didn't give me a dollar to do that, so I have to.
What is the date on that, Sam, if you don't mind?
September 29.
September 29. So where do we go from here, Wes? Can you answer that question, or?
That may be a legal question for.
Or Sam?
Well, Sam, I mean, because it's, if he's in litigation.
Defer it for six months.
You know, you may have to defer it.
How long, Chris? Six months, Chris?
I've been, it's.
Six months, yeah, I would think that, I mean, something should happen in six months if you've got the right attorney.
Go ahead, Sam.
And I've cleaned it up, sir.
There, there are two persons here to make comments, I believe, but you're certainly within your rights to defer it. That's, that's certainly clear. Litigation against insurance companies through hurricanes are, they're not going quickly, but there is a process in place that hopefully these things can get resolved. I could certainly follow with Matt Myes on this and ask him and report back, but as far as deferral, that's completely within your discretion.
Okay, would it be, would it be appropriate for me to defer till the next meeting while you check on all that, and then we can make a decision then to defer?
Probably, probably 60 days.
60 days, okay.
Yeah, I don't think, trying to get something done in 30 days, that's not going to be a whole lot of time.
Okay.
Even if suit gets filed, by the time you serve the insurance company, that you're not even going to have that done yet.
Okay. Okay, then, Don, Sam. Don, you said something about the grass?
Yeah, it's everything, it's, it's a whole different place. I, like I said, I just recently, it hasn't been long ago, hired him to go, to fight to get the money over the insurance and all, but it's been cleaned up. It looks like a whole different place right now, so.
Well, I know that back in April, I want to say it was April, we sent you a couple of letters to go, you know, clean it up and get the grass mowed, and we, at the parish, we ended up wanting to mow it.
Well, yeah, okay, yeah, and sorry about that. I had a renter in there, and he, I get certified letters, he would sign them, wouldn't tell me about it, so I'm recently now finding out all this stuff, and he was supposed to take care of all this stuff, which wasn't, he wasn't doing, but I recently took over, got rid of him, and I'm handling it myself, so it's been cleaned up, and it will be from now on. I'm not going to have a renter in there until I resolve this issue.
Go ahead, Wes.
No, sir, I was just going to follow up on what you were saying, is that we've actually, the police jury has, had to go out there and clean up the property, and we, we basically have about $1,900 plus in liens right now on the property because of the, having to go out there and clean up the property and get the grass cut, so.
You done?
So I will change my motion to, oh, yeah, wait a minute. Sorry about that.
We have two speakers.
Mr. Andropon.
Yes, sir. Looking at, you said you cleaned it up, but yet I'm hearing from staff that they did the cleaning, and you said, and I also noticed on the pictures that it was dated October 4th. So when did this cleaning take place?
Well, originally, I had done most of the cleaning up, and then they showed up like the day after, and I was in the middle of cleaning it up, so, yeah, they did, they did do and come clean up the rest of the stuff I had, but I was in the process of doing it. But now, look, I'm doing this with no money, I've been starved out here for a long time because the storm hit me, I've got other rental properties. I've just been in a, I just not knowing which way to go. I'm just now kind of getting a direction, and I apologize, but, and I had a renter in there, was supposed to do some thing, promising me things. My bad, I should have been a little closer on it, but I wasn't, but when I got ahold of it, it's been taking shape since then. And I had started the process, they showed up right after, a little confusion, because the certified letter, I thought I was supposed to sign the certified letter to, so that I understand what was going on. I haven't signed one certified letter. The renter was doing it, so things were just going on, and I had, I wasn't aware of it. And so when I finally was aware of it, I've been doing everything I can, like again, I ain't got a bunch of money or nothing. I recently had some different issues at the hospital and stuff, so that's neither here nor there, but it's just hard to do it without any money, but I'm on it now, and it won't happen again, I can promise you, you know.
Sir. Yes. Yes, Mr. Crane.
I just want to let y'all know that we did send letters to this property owner because it's listed, his, his address is listed in the tax rolls for this address, even though he is renting the property. And so it took us quite some time to find out where Mr. Huffpower was living in order to give him proper notice. I just want y'all to know that because the way the law is written is that we have to give notice to the people listed in the tax roll. He's listed his, his address for that loca, or where he is at that location, and that's where we had to send it, but we had to do some investigation to find out where he lives so we could, you know, follow up and give him proper notice. Just want you to know that.
That's right, buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Mr. Landry.
That's basically what I was going to say. I don't want to get into man's business, but if he has several rental properties, you need to get with the tax assessor's office and have all those tax bills go to a PO box that you have control over, and then are a physical address of where you're actually living, and you get any notice on any of the properties that you own, instead of it going to the renter, it's going to go to you.
Well, this particular deal was a squatter that was trying to not pay, and he wasn't letting me know anything, kind of making a little feud take place. That's why it became a mess, because he was avoiding me, so it was a mess, and that's exactly what I need to do.
Well, I know somebody that could take care of a guy like that for you if you want. I'll give it to you later.
Yeah, I do, I've got a couple situations. I've got a couple of situations.
The main thing, you got to cut the grass.
Yes, sir.
Somehow you got to cut the grass.
You're right, you're right.
And at least make it look like somebody lives there, which I'm sure all of this is complaint-driven. Somebody called and complained about this piece of property, and that's why you're here tonight. If you make it look nice, I mean, yeah, you got problems with the insurance and all that, but you got to still cut your grass. I've been cutting grass at a house I hadn't lived in in a year, but I still cut the grass every week.
Yes, sir. Prior to the storm, it wasn't as bad, but I noticed
You owe that to your neighbors.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, we have two persons to speak on this item. First would be Mr. Fred Benersite. Please state your name and address for the record.
Name, Fred Benersite, 3950 Jacobs Way. So my house is a catty corner to the house that we're talking about, and I'll tell you, this isn't really a problem that just started with the hurricane. It's been unkept for years. People come in, they move out. The yard's not kept up, trash is all over the yard. Now, it's cleaned up now, you know, because the parish did it. We've had problems with the renters. The guys are, the last ones got arrested there, they went to jail. The fence is down, and the fact that it, it's an ongoing problem, it's not a Laura problem. Now it's a Laura problem, but it wasn't a Laura problem. The sewer doesn't work, the electrical is not up to code, the well's not working, and the house was on my neighbor's well for months, four months after the hurricane. I agreed to let them use it for two weeks or so, and I just got tired of it, and I just said, look, this isn't going anywhere. So I'd just say that, you know, we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood, we just want the neighborhood to look nice, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up would be Mr. David Landry. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Landry, 3951 Haymark Road. Me and my family, my five kids and my wife live directly east. We share a property line with Mr. Don's property, 3931 right there. So we've lived there for about three and a half years. Mr. Don has not lived there. He's rented it throughout the time we've seen him there. So I know y'all talked about property addresses and stuff like that, I mean, so we've had a nightmare with the tenants there. It was, it was kind of a nice country home on an acre, 1.2 acres, when we first moved out there, and the property's deteriorated, the tenant's deteriorated, and it's just gone down spiraling a little bit before Laura and definitely after Laura. So we've had to deal a lot, unfortunately. We've become very familiar with the sheriff's office, and there's a lot of activity in and out of there. Now you have, I mean, just Saturday, there's a man shirtless in a vest riding his bike on the road and just starts pedaling around and looking for a place to stay. That's hard, that's hard to explain to your kids, you know? It's hard when your wife tells you, every day I want to move, okay?
Mr. President, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
The reason why we're here is for condemnation on the property. Doesn't have anything to do with who lives there. The same guy on that bicycle with the vest can buy that house and live there, so I think we ought to keep it to the property and not worry about the renters.
So I was, I was getting to that, because the integrity of the renters reflects the integrity of the house. And the integrity of the house
But we're still talking about property, we're not people.
The integrity of the house is poor. There's no functioning utilities there. The chimney is, you know, as you see in the pictures, it's off. Anytime it rains, it goes directly into the living room. I am not an engineer, and I'm not going to pretend one. I'm a physician, and some of you in this audience, I've treated as my own family. And I would wish, you know, as Mr. Brain's been very helpful, I don't have a horse in the race to condemn the property. We want it a safe property for our neighbors. And if it, I'm not going to get in the way of the police jury's decision on the structural integrity of the building itself, but I'm here to represent my family and my neighbors. So all I can say is, you know, the only reason I'm interested in purchasing that property is to get the RIFRAF out, and that's it.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Yeah. So, Sam, just to go back, so with the litigation, and he's retained an attorney, is it not appropriate for me to keep my motion the way it is, or do it?
Oh, no, no, right now, there's a motion to condemn and remove, and that's the only motion right now on the floor, and it's appropriate. The decision this police jury has to make is, is this building, should this building be condemned? If it's, if it's the structure, the condition of it is such that you, you believe this building should be removed, then you can remove it.
Okay, I'm going to keep my motion the way it was, and I'll keep
And I keep my second.
The motion on the floor is to uphold condemnation?
To condemn and remove.
To condemn and remove by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Andropon. Any objection? Motion carries.
Moved to adjourn.
Adjourn.